Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 1:00 P.M. I am calling the St. Louis County Council Committee of the Hold to Order, April 27, 2021, 1:00 P.M. And we are going to receive an update this afternoon from the St. Louis County Department of Planning regarding tax increment financing projects of Mayfair Plaza, Afton Plaza, and Fenton Logistics. Madam Chair, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Webb, did you have a statement that you needed to make prior?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you so much. I have a conflict at this time that I need to wrap up another call, and as soon as this is another meeting, excuse me, and as soon as this is wrapped up, I will be returning.
All right.
If it pleases you, Madam Chair.
It does. Thank you so kindly for letting us know.
Yes, ma'am.
The committee takes official notice of and admits into evidence all St. Louis County ordinances and resolutions. So we will start this afternoon with Gail, the Director of Planning, and she will guide us through this process. And I'm not sure which project you will take first, Gail, but I think I see Mayfair on the screen.
Yes, thank you, and good afternoon, everybody. My name is Gail Shod. I'm the Acting Director of Planning for St. Louis County. We have three presentations today on five, in essence, it's a progress report or a five-year report on three different TIF proposals that were... Mayfair Plaza was initially approved in 2006, and Afton Plaza and Fenton Logistics were approved in 2016. So as part of the TIF rules, the purpose of the meeting is, the statute requires that the governing agency hold a hearing every five years after the establishment of the TIF, and then every five years thereafter, to determine if the project is making satisfactory progress. The very first one again is Mayfair Plaza. Mayfair is located in north St. Louis County in the 4th Council District, kind of the southwest quadrant of Parker Road and 367. It is an existing shopping center that has been, again, originally approved in 2006. It's a 21-acre site. This aerial just kind of shows you, prior to the 1960s, it was really developed as farmland. The proposal for this property at the time in 2006 by a different developer than who owns the property now was to upgrade the property with some overall enhancements, replating, upgrade the facades, a new traffic signal, improve the parking lot structure, and kind of replat the subdivision to allow for new buildings and new outlots, et cetera. And the next slide kind of shows the progress that occurred shortly thereafter the TIF was granted. The Shop 'n Save, which was the anchor grocery store at the time, was upgraded with facade improvements, and the parking lots were paved. The Bank of America that had been on that property was relocated to a more prominent location fronting on Parker. A new traffic signal was installed along Parker Road for access. And then, as you can see on this slide, subsequent years, additional new buildings were constructed, a VA medical clinic fronting Parker, and a new Taco Bell. And again, that replating allowed for out parcels to be developed for proposed new development. The C8 zoning on the property was amended within this timeframe to give a little bit more flexibility for the neighborhood-style scale uses on the property also. And so, again, these status updates on these projects occur every five years. This project was presented before the council in 2011, and also in 2019. The shopping center was sold in 2016. Shop 'n Save unfortunately closed in 2018. But since we last met in 2016, excuse me, the, a few new vacancies have been filled in the shopping center. No new buildings have been constructed. But overall, the project complied with the proposed time schedule that was in that original redevelopment plan. So with that, this slide just kind of shows you where those two newer, somewhat newer uses went into the existing shopping center, the Washington University Dialysis Center, and the advanced surgical care. That is all that I have for this development. The developer is out of town. Like I said, they purchased it in 2016. I contacted them by email. They gave me these updated occupancies for businesses. And they certainly mentioned that, you know, the closing of Shop 'n Save at this location was a hit to the shopping center. But they're marketing the site, and they are continually looking for new tenants, et cetera. But I'd be happy to answer any questions in particular on this, if the council has any.
Any questions from the council members? So it is not fully occupied right now, Gail. How many parcels are vacant?
Okay, on this slide, you can kind of see the light green area where there's kind of a notation 01-17. There are two parcels that are available for development of new buildings. And those have been vacant since 2006. So three or four new buildings have been built on the property since the original TIF was approved. But there are still two out parcels, completely platted, utilities in place, just in need of a new tenant.
Tenant. All right. Okay, again, any questions from the council? Seeing none, move on.
The next proposal is Afton Plaza. I would just like the council to know that the developer of Afton Plaza is on this call, I believe, and will have a PowerPoint presentation in addition to mine, as will the Fenton Logistics developer also. But Afton Plaza is in South County. It's in the 6th Council District, situated bordered by Graboy to the south, Weber to the north, and McKenzie on the west, this triangular-shaped parcel. This, again, as I mentioned, was approved in 2016. It was approximately 12 acres. Originally, there were, you know, outdated buildings that were in poor shape. There were six single-family residences on the property. The development had been really in place since the 1940s and 50s. Originally, a national grocery store was on the property that was partially developed currently with an O'Reilly's Auto Park, and an Autozone had been constructed more recently on the property. The redevelopment proposal proposed all sorts of new buildings, new uses, reworking of the parking, repaving of the parking, significantly improving the ingress and egress to the property, along with updated lighting, signage, and landscaping. And where those single-family homes were accessed by two roads, Toby and Swift, and the vacation of those roads so that the development could become a unified, single area. This slide just kind of shows, the top slide shows an image from 2010 where, if you can see it, you can just pull in right off of Graboy. The access was not defined, whereas in 2018, changes had been made. The parking lot was upgraded. There's a kind of a grassy median area and a very well-defined access points for this shopping center. Again, Afton Plaza has blossomed. There's facade improvements, upgraded sidewalks along both Graboy and Weber, a new signage, new grassy buffer areas. Emo's and Smoothie King have occupied formerly vacant commercial buildings. There's a brand-new Popeyes restaurant. And kind of the crown jewel is Nine Mile Garden and Canteen has been added, which really is one of the most dramatic changes to the area. But generally, the Department of Planning is reporting that good progress has been made in a timely manner based on the redevelopment plan. This slide kind of shows where the Popeyes is situated, and then the Emo's was redeveloped on a portion of the existing tract. But I think the developer will kind of go more into detail with regard to the architectural elements that are being brought in that are consistent across the board. And then lastly, this again is the new, kind of very cool, Nine Mile Garden and Canteen. That really is, it's the first food truck garden that offers family-focused activities, outdoor movies, music performances, and then also community events. But like I said, I know the developer has a PowerPoint that he will go into much more detail. So Chris, if you can identify Larry Chapman on that.
Gail, let me ask, let's see if there are any questions from the council first before we move forward with that. Any council members with any questions or comments at this point? Okay, seeing none, all right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is Jen. I just wanted to ask a question. I'm trying to determine if you currently have quorum during your meeting. But it looks like you have, you do have four people, I see. I see Councilwoman Webb's is...
Right, she's there. Councilwoman Clancy, myself, and Councilwoman Fitch. I'm not sure if Councilwoman Tracus did see a square there, but I didn't see her.
Okay.
Councilwoman Tracus is on the menu.
Okay. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, good. Okay. So we're going to have now the developer? Is that what we're doing now, Gail?
I believe so.
Okay.
Gail, Mr. Chapman is not on.
Oh.
I do not have him either as an attendee or as a panelist.
Okay. Well, I can certainly show his PowerPoint, but he would just, I'm sure, be enthusiastically showing you all the changes that they have made there. But I know that we do, I do have his PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
I'm not going to do this justice. Oh, there's 57 slides.
Don't think we're gonna see 57 slides.
Yeah, and so he does certainly have some dramatic imagery with regard to aerial views of the shopping center. And kind of, this was kind of an as-built what it was before he took over. So a variety of different buildings, go ahead, Mel. And he describes them and shows kind of the derelict state of them. Keep going, please. And this is the corner right at Weber and Graboy where the new Smoothie King is. And it does show, I think, similar to what my slide showed, that that grass kind of median that kind of separates the parking from Graboy, a significant improvement to the property. The side shows the sidewalks along Weber. It's an excellent view of the Nine Mile Garden area on the property, and the upgrade to the facades also. These are just some of the other businesses on the properties, some of the businesses prior to the renovation, and then today. That former business was MetroPCS at one point. MetroPCS, yes, thank you. And now it's a Smoothie King, so... We'll quickly go through these.
Their loading pumps, well.
So new landscaping, new walks, new businesses. This is the building that has the Emo's pickup window and a sprint use. But as you can see, the architectural themes are continued in the buildings, the use of wood and the stone. That building was torn down. Upgraded signage, brand-new Popeyes. I think you can kind of get the gist of it. It's not completely occupied, but these are some of those single-family homes that I was mentioning, and the two streets that have been vacated. Here's the Nine Mile Garden. This was the rendering and the concept of it. And this is the real McCoy. What is there in place now? There's kind of a, you know, a concert venue area, food truck alley area, and then the canteen is a restaurant where you can go in and use, get beverages, adult beverages, and have restrooms too. So it's really a unique place for St. Louis County. They opened right about a year ago and had a short time where they closed down, but they're back doing great guns now. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'm sorry that there was a disconnect with their developer because I know he would be enthusiastic about the changes.
Okay, all right. Any questions, any comments from the council members?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Tracus.
Well, no, this development is in District 6, and I just want to say that, oh, if all developers were of the stature of this one, and talk about a good corporate citizen, the results speak for themselves. This is, if we're gonna use TIF money, this is how it should end up. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I'll make a comment.
I'm sorry?
Madam Chair.
Okay, who am I speaking? Is that Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I will just kind of offer, tag on to what Councilwoman Tracus said. This is a really great development. I had the opportunity to visit with my family a few weekends ago, encourage everyone to come out and check it out. And what I've been really impressed by with this developer is how much community engagement they did, so that the folks, primarily those right there in Afton and the neighborhood surrounding, really had some input into the type of development it was and how it shaped up to be today. So they set a high bar, and I'm taking that with me as I've engaged with other developers since.
All right, thank you both. Any other comments or questions from any other council members? All right, seeing none, we'll move right along. Thank you, Gail.
You're welcome. And last but not least is the Fenton Logistics Park. I'll let Mel get that queued up real quick. All right, lastly is Fenton Logistics Park, and this is located in the 3rd Council District in southwest St. Louis County. Actually, it's entirely within the city limits of Fenton. It's bordered by Interstate 44, the Merrimack River, and other portions of Fenton. Again, this was approved and adopted in 2016. In this case, the developer had requested that St. Louis County consider the request to move the city of Fenton, and they had concurred also. This is the former Chrysler Assembly Plant, which had been in operation from the late 50s to 2009s, where they had two separate assembly plants, I think it was trucks and vans, or I'm not quite sure. But, please. The developer was proposing to proposing a premier logistics center, kind of a combination of industrial, distribution, office, retail uses, kind of oriented to the highway. And they had quite a bit of infrastructure and plating and demolition that they had to do to get this site ready for new development. They had to add new streets, new driveways, utilities, et cetera. As you can see in this slide, new roads, driveways, dividing the property into individual lots, lots of infrastructure that the developer will go into more detail. And currently, they have added, just in a few short years, six new buildings with approximately 1 million square feet of logistics-type uses, office warehouse. The tenants include Amazon, Nexius, Curology, et cetera, those that I've listed there. And currently, under construction, Gray Eagle Distributors has a 200,000-square-foot distribution facility under construction, and a Wally's Fuel Center also is planned. I'm not sure, quite sure if they're under construction. The Planning Department does not review the plans and the site plans for Fenton, so I haven't been relying on the developer to, you know, update me on this information, which they certainly did. But in essence, and in summary, the Planning Department finds that this site also has made excellent progress under the proposed time schedule and plan as they presented. And I know that this developer is in attendance. I have a few slides of what the property looks like today. Oh, just that one, I guess. So anyway, Mel will queue him up, and he can take over, or, Chris, does he need to be, to share on his own?
I'm sorry, Ernesto?
Yes, please.
I'm happy to do whatever is easier there.
Ernesto, you're the presenter now. You can share your screen.
All right, well, let's do that. Good afternoon, council members and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. I am Ernesto Segura. I'm a real estate development partner with Hush Blackwell, and I represent the developer on this project, who is now known as U.S. Capital Development. This, as you may imagine, was a long gestating project from when Chrysler shuttered the plant in 2011. At the time, it was Coman Properties, then became KP Development, who was the party that entered into the development agreement with the county. And as Gail noted, Fenton, we approached Fenton regarding the TIF. We went through some period of negotiations with Fenton. They ultimately requested that we reach out to the county. Fenton did not feel that they had the necessary staff to administer a complicated development such as this. And so, as Gail noted, that Fenton retained zoning decisions over the site. But KP Development, now U.S. Capital Development, did negotiate the TIF with St. Louis County. This TIF also includes a state supplemental TIF, also known as a super TIF. So there is a portion of the local property and sales taxes that are captured from this project, as well as withholding taxes from state, and withholding taxes on employee salaries that also help reimburse the developer for certain costs. As I move through the slides here, can everybody see the slides?
You see the first page.
Okay, perfect. So here, you get a sense of the outside of the building, along with the first four buildings that were constructed. A little bit of the background, Gail covered some of this. 295-plus acres along I-44. I'm sure everyone's familiar with this. If you drive along I-44, it's hard to miss. The back 95 acres, and I'll move to this, you can see here, were sold to BNSF several years ago. They are holding that site for future development. If you're familiar with the BNSF rail interchange near Maplewood along I-44, that is obviously a limited site for BNSF, and they have plans to move that interchange to this 95 acres that they purchased from KP Development several years ago. As Gail alluded to, we have a number of different buildings completed and under construction. So you see the four buildings that run roughly north to south on the right. Buildings 1, 2, 3, and 4 all are completed and fully leased. We have the building 5 is completed and is occupied by a local Fenton company who's able to expand their footprint first form. And then you see Building 7 is under construction that will be leased in full by Amazon. In addition to those buildings which are developed and leased by U.S. Capital Development, USCD has also sold several parcels and entered into agreements with other companies for development within the TIF. So you see near the bottom left of the site plan, Gray Eagle Distributors and Anheuser-Busch Distributor has selected Fenton Logistics Park for their new distribution headquarters. So they are under construction on a 204,000-square-foot distribution facility, and will move all of their jobs to that location. We've also entered into a ground lease with Wally's Fuel Center. I'll show you some slides here in a moment. Excuse me. Wally's is important because that is the first effort at retail. As Gail mentioned, the frontage along I-44 is ultimately slotted to be used for retail, hotel, restaurant uses to support the job base that is now moving in with the Logistics Park. So Wally's Fuel Center is a critical first step in that piece. There will be restaurants, fuel center, and hopefully, many more retail establishments to come. You'll also note, and it's not, it does not have a separate identification, Fenton Fire District has purchased some property in the very corner of the development for a new station as well. And additionally, what's not shown here, Gail mentioned the infrastructure, this site was nothing but concrete. It has been an extraordinary task to demolish that, clean the environmental issues that were hidden underneath the foundations from the Chrysler sites. And so there were effectively, there was no infrastructure, all new utilities, all new internal roads. The developer has also partnered with MoDOT to construct several million dollars' worth of road improvements along I-44 to help facilitate traffic flow in and out. Here you see some renderings of Wally's locations elsewhere in the country. This is their first foray, I believe, into St. Louis County, a large travel center, which, as I said, we hope to anchor much more retail development. And then a rendering of what we believe the Gray Eagle Distribution Center will look like upon completion. Finally, some, just an aerial to show you, we previously saw the four buildings on the right of this slide. Here you can see the first form building and the Amazon building with that wooden roof. They have covered loading docks, which if you're driving by I-44 in this location, anytime recently, you can see is now painted bright blue. And, you know, the construction continues apace. So my friend and other client, Larry Chapman, put me to shame with 57 slides. But I hope these five have been useful to articulate what we're very proud of, seeing come back to life this Chrysler Assembly Plan into the Fenton Logistics Park. So I appreciate your time this afternoon. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have. I can't hear you, Councilwoman Days.
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Quite all right.
Any questions or comments from council members? I thought I heard Councilwoman Fitch. Okay, question or comment?
Really just a question. The railroad tracks that run through the northern part of that property, of course, I'm old enough to remember when both Chrysler plants were there and were up and operating. It was devastating to see them leave. However, I think what we see going up there, it's in my council district, is a very good project. So are those railroad tracks being utilized for anything?
Yes, they are active BNSF tracks that run along the Merrimack, and then cross the Merrimack and eventually make their way along 44 as it goes through, you know, Kirkwood, Webster Groves, that rail line there that's the same extension of this BNSF rail line.
And I knew that. I meant, is it being utilized by any of the businesses there? Are they loading any product on, like Chrysler used to load vehicles onto that?
Correct, not currently. There's, as of yet, not been tenant demand for rail use at the site. But that is certainly, you know, part of the reason why we wanted to sell that to BNSF is because if they are able to put an interchange there as they plan to long-term, it will be an attractive opportunity for those who do have rail uses in their needs.
Okay, that's all I had, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Segura?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Webb.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Segura, what is the proximity of any residential area to that actual park, that industrial park?
I don't believe there's any near proximity. Um, I don't believe there's any in, any near proximity. Um, to the east of the site, there's more industrial, and then the Merrimack River runs behind it to the north and comes on and turns and runs under I forty-four to the east of the site. So, um, you know, north between I forty-four and the rail line and the Merrimack River to the north is, uh, fully industrial or commercial uses. Um, to the west, additional, uh, you know, commercial, uh, industrial uses and then merits headquarters. So, to the north of I forty-four, there's no residential property. If you go across the Merrimack to the north and up the bluffs, there is, um, residential property, but that is a significant distance away, and, and on top of the bluffs, this is down in the river valley. And then across the street is, uh, fabric, uh, uh, sales and, um, some retail and commercial uses as well on the other side, so no residential anywhere nearby.
Okay, and Sarah, I have one more, uh, question out of curiosity. Uh, just in a ballpark figure, what was your demolition cost and, and cleanup for this project?
Um, I, I believe, um, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of just from the, the demolition of the concrete, uh, and the remediation effort, somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to twelve million dollars that needed to be expended before they could come to contemplate any site work to prep it for development.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Alright, anyone, uh, Councilman Fitch?
Just to follow up on Councilwoman Webb, there's a street called Urnell Road. Um, I don't know if, if, I don't know if there's any homes still occupied there. Many of them, are they, Gail? Are those still occupied? A few of them?
I think just a few. I mean, less than five, I think, that are on stilts along the river.
Yeah, most of those have been flooded out and, and are in disrepair right now. And there's also a county park there, Unger County Park. It was right in that same area as well, so. Um, and I just wonder, Mr. Segura, uh, Segura, I'm sorry, um, do you have any idea why Chrysler wouldn't have been forced to remediate all those issues and remove that concrete before this property was, um, I don't know how it was purchased or how that happened. Do you know, you have any commentary on that?
Uh, Chrysler, um, went into bankruptcy with this site and, um, petitioned the bankruptcy court to allow it to strip the, uh, the buildings and to be sold for scrap metal. Uh, and so the bankruptcy court permitted them to do that. Um, and so while it was in receivership at the bankruptcy court, it was, uh, it was demo- demolished above ground and stripped and sold for scrap metal. Uh, Chrysler was able to retain those proceeds, and then the receiver sold it out of receivership and bankruptcy to KP Development as is. So they took it, um, with the knowledge that, uh, they were gonna have to do that heavy lifting, uh, upfront. So, um, in fact, we, we went to the state and the county. We amended the brownfield, uh, statute to allow for some of those, uh, remediation costs to be reimbursed from the state. Um, we also helped, uh, expand the state super TIF statute so that the state could provide some additional assistance to this. So all in all, um, you know, we, we're thinking two million square feet of development, over two thousand new jobs. Uh, it won't quite get to the same numbers that Chrysler had there, but, um, we're, we're making a good attempt to give back as much as we can for your districts, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. I think it's a good use of the TIF laws. However, it's horrible that a corporation like that can walk away, leave that to the taxpayers to have to fix, because realistically, it's the taxpayers because we're giving incentives, um, to the developer to fix those problems they left behind. Um, just, just doesn't sit well.
It was certainly a challenge to get organized, but, um, we're glad to see the progress that's being made.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for, for Mr. Segura or for Gail? Alright, seeing none. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Segura, and, uh, best of luck to you as you try to infill the rest of your project there. Uh, I do want to go back, uh, since Councilwoman Webb is now on the phone. I don't know if she had, uh, Gail, any questions around, regarding the Mayfair, uh, project, Mayfair Plaza project, which is in her district. So I don't know if she had any questions or anything for you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Webb. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. And yes, Ms. Gail, I did have some questions, and I don't know if, uh, this is the exact audience, but as we look at the Mayfair development and we notice that the Anchor Store and quite a bit of the other stores that were potential there have now enclosed, uh, is there anything in the TIF or anything in this process that will, uh, help to remedy that? I don't know if that, that's appropriate for this audience or not, but I am curious about all of those Anchor Stores and for that development. Uh, is there any plan or anything from the developer or the owner at this time?
I reached out to the developer who is out of town. Uh, they purchased it in twenty sixteen, and they are just trying to market it, um, with regard to filling those vacancies. And also, um, you may have missed that there are two vacant outlots that have yet to be built upon. So not only filling the vacancies in the, in the built portion of the development, but also, uh, the two vacancies on the property. They, they just said that they were trying to market the, the property and that, uh, the, uh, closure of Shop and Save was a big, uh, hit to them also.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. I just was curious.
You're welcome.
I'll probably be following up with your department soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for any of the developers or at this particular time? Councilman Fitch?
And it's not really, it's just, uh, maybe for Gail. Gail, did I read or hear somewhere you're retiring?
I, I, yes, thank you. I am retiring at the end of the month, which means at the end of the week. Um, I've been here thirty-six years. As I was telling, uh, some of the participants earlier, I started when Jean McNairy was the county supervisor, if you remember that term.
Oh, yeah.
Um, yes, I, um, I am, um, refocusing my, my, my life and my career and doing a few different things, but Mel Wilson and Jacob Trimble are the future of the Planning Department. I will be sending you their contact information, uh, which, in case you don't have them. And, and it's been my pleasure working with all of you and all of the different councils that I've had, uh, the pleasure to work with, and it's, it's really been, I've really appreciated and enjoyed it.
Well, I appreciate all your work over all those years as a department head and working with you. You were always the go-to person and still are, and I know you're gonna be missed in that department. Are you coming back for intermittent at all?
Uh, just on a very limited basis, yes, but just very limited.
Okay, well, congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Webb?
Uh, Councilman Fitch already beat you to that. I've already asked Ms. Gail if she will be consulting, uh, on her own and freelancing, so I've already put that out there. It's a newcomer. She's been truly helpful to me in our office as well, so greatly will be missed, but I'm so grateful I had this, this smaller model time to work with you and look forward to bothering you now, Mel.
That's right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Alright, you're welcome. Anyone else? Anyone else? Well, Gail, it has been my pleasure. I wish you the best. Um, we have, and everyone has said that, you know, previously, that you are the go-to person, and, uh, we, we just wanna make sure that, um, that we have good, good people going forward, and I think you have seen to that, and so that is really, um, uh, helpful, uh, for us as we move forward. But this is not an easy, you know, because in many instances, it's a no-win situation for you, and we recognize that, but do appreciate, uh, your, all your work and wish you the best and whatever it is that you decide to do in the future.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Uh, Diane, do we have any public comments this evening?
No, ma'am. No comments.
Alright then. So if that's it, any other, uh, last-minute discussion items for anybody from the council? Alright, and I'm assuming Jen, is, what do we need to do at this particular point?
Well, I would note that the purpose of these hearings were to, for the council to determine whether the, or for the committee to determine whether the redevelopment plans or the redevelopment projects that you heard about today are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule contained in the approved plans for completion of the project. So if there's a council member who wants to make such a motion that, to find that any or all of these plans are making satisfactory progress as proposed, you could do that.
Okay, well, we can do that. I did not see that in the purpose. I just saw this as an update. So that's why I did not think any kind of action was necessary. So is there a motion, uh, that the three projects mentioned met all the, um, requirements of the various TIFs? Is there, uh, Councilman Fitch?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Back it, Clancy.
Oh, people do have to second, okay. Thank you. Now, is that a roll call, Jen?
You can take a voice vote on that if you like.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, and so we think that there's sufficient, um, uh, time has gone by, and these are doing exactly what the TIF was designed to do. Any further business to come before this committee at this time? Seeing none, I need, uh, Councilwoman Webb.
I apologize. I was trying to jump in, but as we went forth and made that motion that they're making process, my concern about the development at Mayfield, um, even though those that were constructed are there and it's a nice site, we haven't had the fulfillment in full, um, occupation of that development. And so that is a concern of mine, and I just wanted to be noted, uh, greatly understand that they may process and actually constructing the building, but as for development at Mayfield, I am concerned about complete occupation of that space.
Okay, and I think that there were a couple of others, the other couples. I don't think they were all fully occupied at this particular point. Uh, I think they're working on that, so your concern is duly noted and it will be part of the record.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I think we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.